Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and welcoming everybody to tonight's Joint Town Council School Committee meeting here in Council Chambers. It's January 29, 2015, and we are starting just a little late, almost 7:40. And before we begin, it's on the agenda, but a quick pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrasco?
Present.
Mrs. Counselor Clements?
Present.
Counselor Estrada?
Absent.
Counselor Miana?
Present.
Counselor Moriarty?
Present.
Counselor Pellicwen?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Counselor Manon?
Excused.
Counselor Vecchia?
Present.
Seven present. Mr. Abrahamson?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
She's delayed.
Okay. Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Mr. Olivo?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Six present.
Thank you. We have just a few agenda items tonight. They're all discussionary. There are no actions that are set to be taken tonight. The first agenda item is discussion of school department budget timeline and processes. And at this point, I would turn it over to the school committee chairwoman, Lauren McLaughlin.
Thank you very much, Chairman Moriarty. The Southbridge School Committee had prepared, in anticipation of the FY16 budget, a draft document. Truth be told, it was kind of borrowed from another school district, and we customized it to fit our needs here. It's not yet a complete document, but the purpose in presenting it here this evening was just to provide kind of the budget process and calendar portion of it, which is on page two, as a jumping off point for discussion. I don't know if the town has prepared something similar. This document also outlines roles and responsibilities for us in preparing the budget as we move forward, some assumptions, applicable laws and statutes, those sorts of things. So I present that to you for your information and also for any discussion and feedback. July 1, 2014, was the start of the current fiscal year. Effective in October, school departments, as they get into the school year, will begin to identify district budgetary needs for the ensuing year. Principals are working currently with school councils to identify school budgetary needs, and they're working to draft proposals. And the next date that comes up would be March 10, and this would be the school committee voting on a proposed school department budget recommended by the superintendent. Again, none of these dates are really written in stone. We are required by law to have a public hearing on the FY16 budget. We kind of tentatively put that in for May 26. May 31, the town traditionally adopts its budget with or without amendments. And then we have June 9 as our target date for voting on the final operating line item budget. Fiscal year would end on June 30, with the new fiscal year to begin July 1. Thank you.
One quick question I have, just based on the budget process and calendar. Do you have any ballpark ideas to when you believe the school department's budget would be presented to the Education and Human Services Subcommittee?
That was a question and something I wanted to discuss with Counselor, or I wanted Counselor Pellicwen's input on.
Okay, we're ready whenever you are.
Okay.
To go forward.
So it seems like if there is, should be one meeting or a couple of meetings, we can absolutely plug that in here wherever it makes sense.
Maybe you could split it over to meetings.
Yes. Yep.
But you're looking presumably around March?
Yes. That's traditionally when it's done.
Okay.
It was done early March last year, so.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes, this to Ms. McLaughlin, I do have a question, because I know as someone that advocated last year for more money for the students. I remember being in the EHS meeting, kind of frustrated and downfunded at the same time. But I was, I want to know how, once the council approves, say, estimated, I don't know, don't, this is just a quote, say, we give $30 million for the school department to use their, this money. How does that get broken down? Because I, I'm troubled that we get $10,000 for a school district for budget, for textbooks. How does that happen? And we expect our students to do better, but we don't have textbooks for them. So how is that broken up? I don't know if that was the superintendent?
Well, it would be a point of order. I'm not sure that getting into the discussion of the administrative prerogatives is appropriate for this forum.
As a-
Those discussions about textbooks and the way the, the school district functions, that is the purview of our superintendent of schools. It's not, I mean, you could talk about it if you want to, but that's not something that we're, we're going to change. That's up to the professionals that we hire to run the school district.
As far as the point of order part, I don't see it as a violation of Robert's Rules of Order.
Okay.
If, whether the chairwoman or the superintendent or whomever chose to not offer a comment or to delay, or, you know, they can respond how they see fit.
I would say, Mr. Chair, fine, may. If we're going to travel down that road, we're going to be here a very long time.
Possibility.
Well, I just will respond, generally speaking, to how the budget is prepared in the two years that I've worked with the budget. And that is that the superintendent confers with the principals, the department heads to prepare a budget. That budget's presented to the school committee, and in subcommittee, we review it. We did look at the textbook line item last year, just as a point of information, and there were a couple of things that affected that. Number one, it was a curriculum, curriculums had not been fully chosen or vetted, if I recall. And the other thing was, the other issue was a question of technology. As textbooks are kind of becoming passe, there was a question, or there was a proposal, maybe, that we do more technology-based resources. And so that $10,000 was plugged in. It wasn't willy-nilly, and it wasn't something that we, as a matter of fact, I recall discussion about it. And the answer was that a curriculum had not been chosen, that there would be funds that could be moved if indeed that became the case, that we needed to choose some curriculum textbooks, which actually we did this year. There was a, there is a new curriculum in the elementary schools, and items were purchased for that. But that's generally how the process works.
What's that, Counselor?
Yes.
School committee member, Quinney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Counselor Carrasco. One of the other things that I think was part of that process in moving forward, the curriculum office has set up a curriculum review cycle, which has never been the case before. So given the curriculum, the expectation would be we would have a curriculum for a set period of time, and would then review how that's working, and then be able to say, this is what we're going to need moving down the road. That hasn't been the process in the past, and that's something that has been implemented this year, moving forward. So I think that there have been some questions as to how things have been done, but now there's a process in place to then, when we have a curriculum, to get the tools that we need to implement that curriculum, and then, moving forward, review it and go through a continuous cycle so that, you know, one year it isn't seventh grade math, and then the next year it's eighth grade math, but to have a full curriculum review cycle, which has been implemented.
I have Counselor Manon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Chairwoman McLaughlin. Is there any way that you could put in the councilor's packets when you're having your meetings on the budgets?
Sure.
We, I would appreciate it. I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I know I would appreciate it. I know I didn't get any information last year. I suppose I could have looked on the school's website, but it's a little bit more convenient if you could just throw an email to Yvonne, and she could stick it in our packets or something?
At our next meeting, we're going to actually be voting on the composition of a budget and finance subcommittee. So as they set their schedule, we'll absolutely forward that on to council.
Okay. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yeah, my, my concern, again, why I bring it up, is because as one that advocated for more money for students, it just seems odd that you would think that the textbooks would be getting purchased. And it is troubling, because I know we want to move in the wave of technology, but we have to also understand our demographics as a community. Not everybody has a computer, not everybody has internet access, and not everybody's going to be able to walk down to the library or all use these resources. So, you know, I just, I, again, I didn't understand the process. I, you know, I, it's a question, because it was very frustrating to hear that only 10,000 was dedicated for books for the whole school district. That seems very minimal. So my concern is that, you know, yes, we want to move with technology, but at the same time, I don't want to move too fast at this district and say, yeah, we're going to go completely technology and forget about the hard school, hard copy books, because hard copy books is what got us through, not technology.
I don't know, Ms. Stanton, if you recall what the National Geographic program was like, and if you could explain that?
Sure. The result of the curriculum review for English Language Arts resulted in the purchase of what you could consider textbooks for the elementary school level. And as a result, they will be reviewing that. Our curriculum review cycle allows us exactly the opportunity to review standards-based instruction, review curriculum, and then make appropriate recommendations for purchase. Textbooks are extremely expensive. Curriculum review cycles, in general, are going to run $250,000. In a, in a cycle where expenditure and funding has been tight, unfortunately, curriculum review cycles can be the first items cut from a budget, especially when you look at a budget that has so much funding in human capacity to be in front of the children. So do you, do you want books, or do you want teachers in front of students? And oftentimes, in difficult budget times, that's the decision we're faced with.
Any other questions or comments on the budget timeline or processes? Agenda item number four, discussion of town and school facility use and access. I, I think this is twofold. One, that's been a big issue of topic or discussion in the last couple of years, in the last several months in particular, is Americans with Disabilities Act and that access. On the town side, I will turn it over to the manager to speak briefly, or at least the Reader's Digest version, as to what the town is doing with West Street Field. Thanks to Senator Moore and his efforts.
Chairman, as chairman, members of the council, and school committee and superintendent, the council may recall that there was a grant program called Our Backyards, which the outgoing Governor Patrick had funded and had provided grant money typically in 150,000 to 200,000 range for every city in Massachusetts. Because of our charter, we are defined as a city, although we're a town. So we qualified for that program. Unfortunately, the program in its initial funding stages was strictly for building new playgrounds. And when that was presented to the council in the spring of last year, the concern was that we didn't have proper funding to maintain the playgrounds that we already had, and we didn't need to be building a new one and creating another maintenance liability. So it went back to the drawing boards, it came back as a splash pad, I think, the second time. For a community with some of the highest water rates in the state, there was unanimity of opinion, in this case with, I believe, was the REC Commission, that having a, a public and frivolous waste of water was not something that would be politically embraced by the community. So once again, the grant program was rejected. I think it was this fall, the Handicap Commission attended a council meeting and presented some priorities for addressing barrier issues at playgrounds and playing fields in town, and asked that the council do what it could in the coming capital budget to address that. Staff and I had some conversations with the folks in the Department of Conservation Resources, DCR, that control that playground program. They pretty much flatly rejected the idea of using that money for barrier removal, and asserted, once again, it had to be for new playgrounds, and that was that. Senator Moore then got involved, and at our request, and apparently did a little arm-twisting. And subsequent to that, we had further conversations with DCR, and they were amenable to doing some compromising, put it that way. So what we ended up with was about 40-odd percent, about 45% of the grant money was spent on removal of architectural barriers at the West Street Playground, and refurbishment of some features that were already there but had been, had grown and become overgrown and disused. So replacing those at a small playground, which is going to be, as you come in, to the back end of the, of the parking lot. So, and they actually increased the grant by some 21,000 from about 113 to about 133, thereabouts. So that was a significant achievement for the community in terms of getting some substantial money toward that goal and not having to use taxpayer funds. That's been kind of the highlight so far this year. Of course, the capital budget is yet to be formulated, and there may be some additional progress that we're able to make at other locations of the capital budget this year, depending upon the council's priorities.
And in addition to that, I know the Youth Soccer League has stepped up, and they're doing work down at the soccer field at West Street as well, as a nonprofit, as a private group. And then I know that the chairwoman and, I believe, the vice chair of the school committee, thought I said, there she is, and myself, as well as, I think on both of these is Chris Clark, who was the manager at the time, and depending which year and which superintendent we had, went down to these facilities and took a look at them. So just, I don't, I know we had talked briefly about Charlton Street as well, with its ADA. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, but I'm not sure what the list of concerns is. I know there was a talk about some handicap signage being maybe missing from some parking spaces, also some pathway access. I don't know if somebody has a comprehensive list that they could give us, that we could provide it to Mr. Como and the Maintenance Department, so that we can begin to, you know, as we're entering budget season, to plan for those as well. Some may be relatively simple fixes, and other things may take a little bit more time, effort, money, creativity.
I do know that, that this list has been provided in the past. Granted, there have been changes since. But the easy ones, to my recollection, are largely handicap parking spaces, which, I'm sorry? Yep. The, on, on the left-hand side, there are a couple of places with the gates, which are barriers for people who may be in a wheelchair or otherwise. Their sidewalk kind of disappears at one point, things to that effect. But I will touch, I can touch base as well, but with the Commission on Disabilities, Lee and Pate, who obviously is very heavily involved on the school side as well, is a member of that. Mr. Pateos?
I was going to suggest if Mike wants to give the Commission on Disabilities a call. They're very proactive, wonderful folks, working a couple of times, and they either will have something already inventoried, or they'll do, it's called a Section 504 assessment for you. They're very proactive in that. And they'll go out and take a look at things for you and give you, you know, some great recommendations. I also forgot, Mr. Chairman, to mention to everybody, of course, we've done some wheelchair ramping improvements down on Main Street with that sidewalk project. The, the ramping currently has some problems. It's, it's too high. In fact, of all the ramps, only one is ADA compliant. So the contractor's been notified. He can't do much at this time of year for obvious reasons, but in the spring, he'll have to come back, and he will have to actually jackhammer up some of those ramps, and he'll have to reestablish them. If he fails to do so, we will shortly be putting him on legal notice that, if he fails to do so, to the town's satisfaction, that we will undertake that, and we will simply withhold it. I'm currently withholding, I believe it's 34,000, from the contract for successful completion of the punch list, and that's one of the largest items on it. So that's a little bit of good news downtown as well.
Beyond that, this is a question that I had at the prior joint meeting. We had talked about community access to school facilities. And I know at the time, we had, the school committee was either, had just passed or was looking at a revised plan and procedures. I don't know if you can enlighten us a little bit on that?
Well, what I can provide for you is both our policy on the community use of school facilities, and the informational packet that we have, the fee schedule, those types of things. I'm happy to pass that along. Maybe halfway and halfway. If anyone wants to take a look at that?
Do you need one?
Uh, sure.
And generally speaking, if I recall, part of discussion or the thought process was nonprofit groups in particular would have a differentiated rate from, from other entities?
Yeah, and I think you'll see that reflected on the fee schedule. We had defined the different categories of user groups. So Group A would be official Southbridge Public School or Town of Southbridge Events, Elections, or Meetings, no costs to the parties. Group B would be recognized parents, parent groups whose mission it is to support and fund enrichment for students attending Southbridge Public Schools. These would be the booster clubs, the parent-teacher organizations, special education advisory groups. Those would also receive no cost unless noted below. And so an example would be if one of those groups wanted to use an auditorium and required use of AV services, audiovisual services, or something extraordinary above and beyond the space itself. And Group C would be registered public charities and nonprofit groups based in Southbridge that support philanthropic, artistic, athletic, and recreational opportunities for Southbridge youth, whereby 60% of participants must be Southbridge residents under 18. A letter of determination from the IRS or other documentation to verify tax-exempt status would be required. And they would only be billed or charged direct costs associated with the facility or activity, as noted below. And Group D would be any society, organization, or group desiring to rent a facility which does not meet the criteria outlined. Private and commercial groups, nonprofits not based in Southbridge would be assessed what is fair rent value. And then coming up with this fee schedule, we consulted districts surrounding ours, and we are still with these fees less than those districts. We tried to be very cognizant of our, you know, again, our demographic, our population, that type of a thing. Part of the reason for doing this and breaking it into the four groups had to do with the fact that we get so many requests to use the facilities, as I understand it, and there were more exceptions to the rules. And we kind of wanted to reverse that and make the, the rule stand. And the superintendent, of course, has the authority to waive, to override any, you know, fee or cost decision that's made, but we felt that this would be more helpful. And then on the back of that, there's a definition which explains what service personnel fees would be. Again, these would be if, if services above and beyond the space was required. So if additional custodial services were required, and the custodial staff was not on site, so if it's off-hours on a weekend or something like that, the kitchen staff, if we need use of the kitchens, other ancillary fees, and then also, there's some frequently asked questions. These have been posted to the district website, the school district website. We kind of had to hunt for them today, but I'm going to see if we can get those moved, maybe under Community Resources or somewhere that's a little bit easier to view. They should be up there to help guide people. And if people have any questions, they would contact the business office. That would be the-
And as far as, on a, on a standard Saturday afternoon in May kind of thing, the field's open dawn to dusk anyways. General public can come in, and so long as it's not being reserved for an actual function event, what have you, something that's formally reserved, it's, it's free rein.
Mm-hmm.
So the only, the only question I had then is, the other night, I was stopped at the grocery store by a family that's involved with Pop Warner and Little League and such, and they had said that they have a son who plays on the baseball team that we just recognized several months ago, town side, with the, the road signs for winning the district championship going on to state and all that sort of thing. Their assertion was they had shown up one day and were more or less told they couldn't play on that field because they hadn't reserved it in liability reasons. Is there any, in, in that event, if they were to show up and be told that again, is, what, what would you suggest?
That's a matter for the superintendent and the business office. If there is a, other than like a pickup game, or it's a coordinated event or routine practice-
Yeah, it was unclear to me as to which it was. Right.
That's something we can certainly get clarification on.
And then-
But generally, if it's a league that is going to conduct regular practices at the fields, we would need to be notified of that.
And then the only other question I have on this for myself at the moment is, I was approached just the other day by three or four people from Gateway Players, and they had an issue where, I'm trying to recall the exact figure, but I want to say it was costing them several thousand, in excess of $5,000, to utilize the auditorium for three or four shows. Part of that fee, from what they were explaining, was a mandatory 2,000-plus for audiovisual. They, they have their own audiovisual people, if you've ever been to one of their productions at Gateway. So they have that experience, they have that ability, but they were told that they had to hire whomever. They had to go through what the district has. And I know seeing it here anyways, you know, no charge unless AV services require, that's Group B, but there's no real talk of requiring those AV services.
It's my understanding that at the new high school, that equipment is under a warranty, and that warranty requires that that equipment be operated by trained district personnel.
Okay.
Even though they may have somebody that does it professionally, it would void the warranty on that equipment. That's what I was told previously. With regard to your current situation, I'm not familiar, so I would have to inquire. I know that the superintendent last year worked with Gateway Players, so they could have a show during the summertime there. So I don't know the specifics of that.
But in theory, then, the AV equipment at the old high school, Cole Avenue, if somebody was to rent out that auditorium-
Mm-hmm.
-it should not be an issue?
That-
To your understanding? Or is that not something you can comment on?
Not something I can comment on at this point.
Okay. All right. If anybody else has any questions, comments. Counselor Manon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a comment on this, so if Counselor Steves does, I'll let him go. I have a question in regards to another facility.
Okay. Counselor Steves?
I had actually heard the same issue too, but I had other questions as well, so, so I don't, I don't care who goes first, you or me.
Just go with it.
Okay. Okay. I was actually going to jump to an issue of wondering where the, periodically, I've heard concerns about, about the idea of putting solar on the school, and I was wondering where that stood.
Solar panels on the school?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I had heard of it a couple of times. I've talked to a couple of people, not recently, but over, over the course of the last six months or so, about the idea of putting solar on the roofs of the, of the roof of the school, that there was a project to look at doing that. And I was wondering where that stood, because I think that would be a great thing if we could do that.
I, again, Mr. Como's not here. I don't know if that is something that's in process. I'm not familiar. That's the first I've heard of that.
Okay.
If you can inquire of Mr. Como. I have a list for him. I'm getting a list ready for him.
And the other thing I was wondering is, how are you guys are currently using the land behind the school for educational purposes, and if you have any plans to do so?
The middle high school?
Yeah.
I would defer to the superintendent on that.
I would defer to the middle school, high school principal, if she heard the question.
I was wondering what you guys are doing for, how you're using the, the land on the, the land on the high school campus for educational purposes, and what your plans are for that.
Please?
So the land at the high school is primarily used for physical education classes, wellness classes, all of the fields around the building. Predominantly, the fields, as you look to the building to the left, which are the football practice and some of the soccer fields?
I was thinking more in terms of like the, the space out back, the forest-
I was thinking more in terms of like the space out back, the forest for, say, sciences and things like that.
They're not really using the forest out back for anything right now. The drop-off where the trails are, they don't really use that. They do have a couple of plant boxes out back, and at a school committee meeting a few weeks ago, if you watched that, you remember that they had the dedication from Wells and Coal Trade, and they finished that area out back. So that is, we're anticipating using that area, which is kind of like an outdoor theater of sorts for classes in the spring, once it's usable weather permitted. We're building ice sculptures out front, too. That was supposed to start happening this week, but we're gonna move that to next week.
Okay.
If I may, the science curriculum review cycle is next, and one of the things in speaking with Dave Williams, the department chair, was to review exactly that, how we can build more project-based, hands-on learning into the sciences, making connections with the wastewater and water treatment plants, and so building that into the curriculum so that we would have a plan in place.
Okay. Just a comment for the school committee's edification. There is a statute
that limits how much solar power any individual community can purchase. The council, about, I'm gonna say about six weeks ago, authorized the purchase of solar credits, which was a very, very substantial amount of power that we are now purchasing, solar-based power. So if Mike is considering that, two things he needs to be aware of. Number one is that it must be procured according to procurement law, which ordinarily does not apply to schools, but in this case it does. And secondly, we would need to coordinate so that we don't exceed the limits in terms of what we're allowed to buy. So if you have, if Mike is anticipating that, and you can have him get in touch with me, I'll help him out.
Thank you. Again, I don't know if that is the case or is not the case, but I certainly would relay that to him. Thank you.
Councilor Mano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, on the school facility use and access, the agenda item, would bringing a Colav pertain to this agenda?
It is currently a school facility.
Okay. So my question, I suppose, would be, how much use are we getting out of the Colav building? How much money's being brought in? How much of this is the school or the town paying to keep this facility open? It was, to my understanding, that this school was deemed not for use because of, like, one part was condemned, I guess, or fell in. Was it the library part? Yeah, okay. So, I mean, that was partly the reason for getting the new school and when they pushed it, which I was very, excuse me, grateful to see the new school. But, I mean, if this is costing the taxpayers more money than we're taking in with it, then it may be in the town's best interests to sell the property.
I don't know. Your point's well taken. That building actually does see a lot of use right now. The new school facility, as beautiful as it is, really lacks adequate gym space. And so we have so many kids practicing sports that we actually need to use that space at Colav for practices. And, but your point's well taken. I mean, a large portion of that building is empty. Head Start is occupying a portion of it. There are district offices there. There's a student, the student after-school program that's run there. The ombudsman program is run there. That is something that we have talked about, having a use study done on to determine whether that's worthwhile to keep open. It's expensive to heat the building. But part of the reason that that building was, this is my understanding, and I wasn't involved at that time, so I, you know, forgive me if I misspeak or state anything incorrectly. I certainly can look into that. My understanding was that there was an issue with the library. That part of the building was removed. That was remediated. And that there were other issues with the building that made it not a suitable space for a high school learning environment in the 21st century. And that that's why the building was deemed unusable, but that it's still habitable for certain purposes. So, but I think, to your point, I think there should be a use study done on that building. And if it's not a smart decision to be there, we, you know, certainly should move on.
Thank you. I would like to see, though, if possible, the amount of money that the school is taking in and how much it does cost to operate it and what it is actually costing the town. That would be, I think that would be beneficial for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Abramson?
Mr. Abramson. I would say to the counselor, if she's interested in proposing that the town take over that building, I think there's a lot of us who would support that. And so if you would make that recommendation, you will have my cooperation.
Councilor Steves?
Yeah, I have a question, too. I know we've talked about the idea of doing business incubation around town, and that, and Colav has come up. Do you think it would be possible to have a Colav situation where we have business incubation and some of the existing uses in that building at the same time? Because it's a need for Head Start, there's obviously a need for school administration site.
Mr. Manager?
I think the short answer to the question is, sure, all things are possible. But I think before, we'd be in a position, you know, to say anything that's truly based on some intelligence. There would need to be a fairly significant assessment done to determine, you know, what the uses would be, what code improvements need to be made, and, you know, things like that. We are currently doing exactly that at 70 Foster Street, as I think the council is aware. We'd have to make, and that effort is costing us, I think, $10,000. We'd have to make a similar effort with Colav in order to be able to say anything, like I say, with any real intelligence behind it.
And I would think that would also be something that a use study would be something that it could look at. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on the agenda? Ms. Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I wanted to add about summer programming at the Southbridge Middle High School is ancillary services also include air conditioning, which to air-condition that auditorium for that, for a purpose of a show only, is very expensive in and of itself. So that's one of the ancillary services that I don't think were discussed, but especially in the summer, is something that needs to be considered when people are applying for that space, use of that space. That was all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Moving on to Agenda M number five, discussion of town manager and superintendent searches. As far as the town manager search, we actually just had a meeting within the last few hours, so I'll turn that part over to Councilor Carrasco.
Yes, just to keep everybody updated, we have selected a new firm. It is the Edwards Collins Center. They are affiliated with UMass. And we just had a meeting, and we met with one of the two individuals that are gonna be, we're gonna be working hand-in-hand with. And one of the major components of why it's been so difficult for us to be able to proceed forward with the candidates and the timing, the first town manager search was put on hold due to the petition that arose. So the town manager search committee put it on hold for about three months until that was cleared. And then we revamped in July, and we just decided in December to change route due to the limited candidates, the pool of candidates, because this is something that we don't want to mess up. We think that this is highly important to our community. So the committee decided to drop, or suspend, excuse me, for lack of better words, suspend the current search and reopen the bids for different consultants. And we did that. We interviewed all four. We had four consultant firms that came out, and we either, we interviewed them all. And so now we're moving forward with the Collins Center. One of the things that has come up in our constant search is, unfortunately, the turnover, the turnover in the administration, upper administration. One of the recent comments from the search committee is that we're excited that we finally have a group of principals that have the school stable and operating well. So on behalf of the search committee chair, I want to thank the principals for being here tonight, and great job. It's being recognized by citizens, it's being recognized by people that the schools are operating very well. But our concern is the turnover with the superintendents, some negative press on both sides. And that's something that we're trying to eliminate. That's one of, one of my goals on the council is to highlight positive and kind of eliminate the negative. But unfortunately, Southbridge is a magnet to it, the negative. So in regards to town manager search, you know, there's been comments, oh, well, we did lose potential candidates because of our school system. That, those people have the right to say that. But again, when it comes down to is, how are we gonna move forward as a town and a school committee to provide the best profile? Because we, as a community, have two vacancies currently. The two top dogs of our community are vacant. I know we have interim, and I thank God for our interims. They're doing a great job. I've not worked with the interim superintendent, but I've worked hand-in-hand with Mr. Pecos, and he's doing a great job. But how are we gonna come together as a community, as a council and school committee to provide the best profile possible? So when we, as a town, search committee can present, and these candidates ask us point-blank, what do you think of your current school committee? What do you think of the process of the superintendent? How are we gonna move forward? I know we're moving forward. We're in the process of developing a town profile, and I can tell you that the number-one concern from all five school, excuse me, town manager search committee members is our education, our school. That's our number-one concern. Because we understand, as a town, if our education in our school department does not get to where it needs to, we are not gonna be able to move forward as a town. And this is not just an issue on the school side, this is a town-wide issue. So moving forward, we're developing that profile. So we will have that profile. I can tell you that if you do see that profile, the number-one critical need that will be listed on our town manager profile as a critical need is we need to find a town manager that's willing to communicate and develop relationships with the new superintendent to move our town forward, because that's, they have to be able to help us with that, because we're in a critical, critical state in regards to moving forward, because we have two key vacancies. And on our town side, as a, as the chair of that search committee, I know it's been difficult answering some of those questions when we don't have the answer. We don't, we have not had regular meetings where we should communicate on a regular basis. So it's difficult to answer those questions. And unfortunately, it comes down to a lot of negative press on the school side because not having the proper ammunition to defend the school side and move forward in regards to, I know we're in the process of doing a search. So I hope the school committee is gonna follow suit to do a search also, to join forces. And I hope that, you know, we're able to say that moving forward, that, no, there's a search process happening, and we're able to present this to our candidates. And so we can not, unfortunate, if they make the decision to leave us because of the rumors they want to read in the newspapers or the blogs, whatever you call it, that's fine. But at the same time, we want to, as a committee, be, to inform them. This is what's happening on the school side. They are in the process of doing a search committee to select a town manager.
Got anything else to say about it? The only thing I would add is, there's been a great effort for transparency and inclusionary measures with this search. With the prior firm, when it came down to semifinalists and quarterfinalists, we had asked for, from the general public, for some participation to take part in what we anticipated would be two panels of 10 individuals each, one made up of 10 municipal employees, which may or may not have included school side if there was interest, and then 10 residents. Unfortunately, opening that up, there were five people total that put in four employees and one resident. So we went forward with a group, one group of five. But certainly, once we get further along in this process, again, now that we're restarting this process, any input from the school side, whether it's school committee, school administration, school staff, school faculty, students, for all I care, everybody matters in this community. Certainly welcome them to play a role in that and have their voice, because this is your, at least on our end, this is going to be your next town manager, who is going to help, hopefully, keep finances in control and move things forward and so forth. Councilor Mano?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Thank you for stating that at the end in regards to community involvement, because that was gonna be one of my questions. I guess my next question is to Chairwoman McLaughlin in regards to the superintendent. Have you formed a search committee? Are you going to form a search committee? And if not, why?
I'll answer that, and then I would like to just address something else after. We had intended to have that discussion on Tuesday night, but due to the blizzard, that meeting's been rescheduled for February 3rd. So the same night that Desi will be here, we have that discussion on our agenda. So that will take place at that time. We were hoping to have that meeting and then have this meeting, and that we'd be able to provide some more definitive updates. So I regret that we can't do that tonight, but we will definitely be having that discussion next Tuesday.
Thank you. And I encourage the community to tune in. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that part of our effort to, you know, provide more information and be more inclusive with the town was, Mrs. Donovan and I have been in regular contact as liaisons on behalf of the school committee with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're obviously very aware of our circumstance, very aware of the toll, although I don't think they fully appreciate the toll this takes on the town and the community and those of us that have been here for a long time and have been through what we've been through. But one of the things that Mrs. Donovan and I asked was that a high-level, high-ranking person from the Department of Education come to Southbridge and explain to the community, the process, the accountability, both district and school accountability measures. I'm sorry, I keep looking over here. I'm ignoring you folks. I don't mean to. So that they can kind of present where we are, where we've been. We had some good growth last year. It's not certainly where we want to be, but there's clearly evidence that there was growth in this district last year. So there was forward progress for the first time in a long time, and they have the documentation to be able to substantiate that, so that you're not just hearing that from us, but that in fact. And they are still planning to come to the February 3rd meeting. They've been able to reschedule, so they'll be here. It's, you know, I sent invitations to everybody. I'm sorry I didn't send a new invitation, but I did let Mr. Moriarty know, Chairman Moriarty know about that. And it's my intent to request that we suspend the rules so that the town councillors can ask questions and hear for themselves. And if any questions that they, that may be lingering, rather than hearing it through a third-hand or second-hand through us, that you can hear those directly through the Department of Education.
Ms. Quinn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To build on Councilor Carrasco's statement, I stated at our last meeting that I do feel that this town side versus school side is detrimental to the community, because we are all Southbridge. You don't have a school outside of Southbridge. It's part of the town. And all being united in what is in the best interest of the town and truly in the best interest of the town, and to have a thriving economy in our town is to have good schools. interest of the town, and to have a thriving economy in our town is to have good schools. And I think that that's, everybody here is supportive of that and moving forward. I think, however, it is detrimental to the school department in moving forward and trying to make progress when publicly or privately elected officials undermine the progress and choose to share negative comments regarding the schools and challenges that may have been faced or difficulties that have happened in certain offices. For that to then become a point of discussion to further someone else's agenda, I think is, doesn't benefit anyone. If we are going to build a community that supports one another and gets to a point where we are a thriving community, we need to support what's going on and be positive of that. That's not to say that there are issues that we need to discuss, but to err those in a venue that doesn't lead to discussion, doesn't lead to solutions, is nonproductive and is rather counterproductive and harmful to what I believe that we're all trying to achieve. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Stevens?
Actually, to go back, if you could, to use Chairman McLaughlin.
He's speaking too much, please.
Sure. This is actually to Chairman McLaughlin. Following up what you were saying about growth in the district, I was wondering if you meant, did you mean test scores, student enrollment? Where do things stand as far as school choice?
Um, I, what I was referring to, and you will see that, how our progress is measured by the Department of Ed is kind of a bunch of factors that come together. And that's what Associate Commissioner Johnston is prepared to explain, and he has slide, a slide presentation, and how that's all formulated and calculated. It has to do with attendance rates, it has to do with graduation rates, it has to do with test scores, it has to do with how many more students are moving to advanced, how many fewer students are failing, those kinds of things. So he'll be in a better position to really explain that.
Okay.
And as far as choice goes, I don't know where our numbers are at this particular point in time. I have not inquired about those as of late.
Okay. And the other question I have is, how do you think, this can go to pretty much anybody in the school committee, how do you think the town council can help promote education as a more serious community value to help, to help the school system as a whole stabilize? Because I think it's an internal and external issue. If we promote education on the outside, it helps build it on the inside, and vice versa. If, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yes. I don't know if anybody wants to answer that, I've done a lot of talking. Anybody?
I guess I can. I would say one of the key things that you could do is being knowledgeable about what's actually going on in the schools and where we're at as a school district. I think where there's lack of knowledge, then rumors fill that, and that's not necessarily at all based in fact. I think that there are opportunities, maybe if people could go on learning walks or kind of see what's going on inside buildings in a structured way, to view that, to be able to then share the process that is in place, how education is being focused on, how the standards, what teachers are doing in classrooms, how that AIP, what the AIP is, how it's being implemented, to have that knowledge to then fill the vacuum and to put an end to the negative rumors. As I said, I think that there are issues and challenges that we face, but I think coming together as a community with solutions or suggestions to address the issues, rather than screaming, "We have issues," would be helpful.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Abrahamson?
In terms of superintendent's search, that was the purview of the school committee, the nature of that search, or whether there's a search at all, will decide based on, on what we, the information that we have. Sometimes you don't need to search for something that's already there, that's just thrown out for consideration. I would say it is really interesting that I hear that the schools, but for the schools, this is, this is the, the mantra, but for the schools, managers would be clamoring to come to Southbridge. I think that's probably not so. And I suspect that there are some problems within this town that are non-school related, that some town managers may find challenging. So I, I want to make sure that that argument does not pervade this discussion. It is not just the school system that has problems in this town and has a history of problems in this town. If we want to talk about superintendent searches, we surely can talk about town manager searches and how, how some of those were arrived at. I don't think that's productive, but if you're going to do one side, then we got to do the other. So, thank you.
Counselor Manon?
Yes. Just through you, and it's just a comment. I think the community likes to see transparency. And when Superintendent, then Superintendent Ely was appointed, that was a wonderful search. It was all open to the public. The public, they sat here for eight, nine hours, and they watched the interview process. They were involved in this. And I see the town manager's search committee now, and when Chris Clark was even brought on as town manager, that was very open and transparent to the public also. So I think that transparency is the key. And when you don't have transparency, people think that you're hiding something. And that's all. Thank you.
Just, just briefly, I'm, based on the reactions I saw, I'm assuming what you're saying is the search process itself was, I forget the word, I think you said wonderful, not necessarily the result, just based on the reaction.
Correct.
Ms. Quinney?
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think the initial search process to get a superintendent for, when Mr. Ely came, was a transparent process. That was filled with people that were dedicated to that process, that were coming to a consensus and had a top runner candidate in mind, however, at which time, prior to the moving forward of that candidate, that process was ended, and the school committee stopped that and then created their own process, which lacked transparency and left us in a situation that was challenging and we are trying to move forward from at this point. So I think to say that that process in and of itself was transparent and positive would be overstating at this time.
I'll sit. Mr. Abrahamson?
I won't add to that.
I'm sorry?
I won't, I won't add to that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
I just want to say that, if I may, Chairman Moriarty, that, you know, you have people up here that are dedicated, that are giving of their time, that are busy with their own lives and their children, and their families, and their educational pursuits, and their work pursuits. And I think we have a good start here by a bunch of people that are genuinely bonded by a concern for the community. And we should be able to start there. And I think part of it is that we don't know each other very well. We really don't. And so to some of us, some of us are mere caricatures. You've heard what Mrs. McLaughlin says, I, you know, you've probably seen cartoons about me, there'll probably be one again tonight. So you've seen, but has, you know, has anybody really talked to me about my hopes, my goals, my dreams, my visions for the, for the community? I'm, you know, I ran, not to waste anybody's time, I ran to the biggest, I've said this from day one, my biggest goal was to stabilize the school district. That continues to be my goal. And I can't control every little thing that happens, the school committee can't. You do put your faith in some people, sometimes that faith is, you know, you, you learn from it. This has been a real learning experience for me, and I think for many of us. And I'm sure maybe even with the town council, some may feel this way. You run, you have the best intentions, you are running with honor, you are running with no agenda other than to see things happen well, and some things happen and they're out of your control. What you do is you try to rein it in and bring it together. What we've done as a school committee is, we had a superintendent resign in the middle of a school year. The immediate goal was, again, to stabilize. Ms. Stanton, we are in very capable hands. We are in extremely capable hands with Ms. Stanton at present. We will now decide, but what we didn't want to do is appoint and then immediately go running to a search like everybody was clamoring for, because that, sometimes you need to let the dust settle, you need to catch your breath and take a pause for a minute, let Ms. Stanton get situated as well, and then we move on more methodically. I think in the past, I know I unintentionally have done things maybe react, in a reactionary capacity, that, you know, I want to be very thoughtful and deliberate as we move forward here and do the right thing. But I think that's something we all share. Everybody up here, I think, wants to do the right thing. That's a really good start. Because I, I look around and I, you know, I see all these faces here, I know people are spending a lot of time that care deeply for their community, and I think that's a very, very good start for us.
Just to build quickly off, off one piece that, that kind of struck me, in terms of the deliberateness of that search, similar to the procedure that we're going through on the town side, our options, we weighed and, and we decided we weren't going to try and hire somebody to come in middle of April or May and kind of upend what our current acting town manager's done and change quarterback midstream sort of thing. And I know, just from the experience I've had in different systems and such, no system worth their, worth anything, and certainly no superintendent worth anything, is going to leave one school district for another during the school year, unless they're forced out for some reason. But, but you're not going to get, you're not going to get, and I, you know, I doubt that he's on anybody's radar, I don't think he's looking for work at that point, but you're not going to get a Sean Gilrain to come over midterm, midway through a school year. You're not going to get a Jeremy Roche come over halfway through a school year, what have you. So I think having a deliberate search process on the school side, somebody that's going to start, say, August 1 or something to that effect, July 1 with the new fiscal year, is the prudent move. Obviously, putting your ducks in a row and assembling what you plan to do with a search process, that's, that's a different discussion. But I think being deliberate is, is important. And I think that is perceptually, from the outside looking in, not being a school committee member, but somebody, whether when I was covering the town or, or in this role, I think that has been the Achilles' heel of this district over the last 10 to 15 years, is not being deliberate, more or less rushing into things, whether it's certain principal hires, superintendent hires, or fires. You know, for whatever reasons they may be. I know I, when I did my student teaching, just as an example, up at Neshova, which is one of the better school districts in the state, according to many people, their principal, January, February, right around this time of year, chose to, to leave to take a job at the next school year in another district. They were hot, they went through a process to find an interim, a, a large-scale process to find an interim principal for the next year, so that they would then have a permanent principal the year after. Seemed a little excessive, but very, obviously very, very deliberate, and the district that, that has pretty strong stability and track record. So in terms of, of being deliberate, that I'm perfectly fine with. I personally, you know, I think that's great. Transparency, I think, is important as well. But obviously, just making sure that we have our ducks in a row, or that the school side has its ducks in a row, just as we're working and making sure that we do so on our side. Because just as, as similar to what Counselor Carrasco said earlier, and same thing that I've said to, to the search committee numerous times, on the town manager's side, and the same ring true, if not more so, on the school side, we are at a crossroads, crossroads where we, we can't afford to make a bad hire. This is not hiring, not to be demeaning in any way, this is not hiring a waitress at Denny's, where you make the bad hire, oh, well, you can get another one. This is something on both sides that we need to make sure we, we get someone who's not going to be here just for eight months, 12 months, 18 months, but hopefully, perhaps unrealistically, for eight years, instead of those eight months. Mr. Abrahamson?
I would say to the chair, there's a difference between the town council cooperating with the school committee and co-opting the school committee. My friend Counselor Carrasco likes the Bible verses, and, and I would say, a, a good one would be, you may not want to be pointing out the speck in your brother's eye when there's a log in your own. So I think we all have enough on our plates to attend to, whether it's the town side or the school side. So we appreciate the cooperation, but I don't think we appreciate being co-opted.
Not, not to, I'm, I'm not looking to engage in a debate by any means, but personally anyways, on my end, from numerous meetings, there is, there at times tends to be a feeling of, and I'm sure the feeling is, is on the other side as well, but I think more so from our point of view, certainly from mine, there seems to be more of a, I don't want to use the word antagonistic, oppositional point of view. And I agree, cooperation is what's most important, it's what we need to do. It's something that, since I've been on the town council, I've pushed for, for this. And the first year, it was, well, we only do that when it's an emergency. The second year, we had a couple EHS meetings. This year, you know, I certainly wanted to make sure it was a priority that we do this on a regular basis, and I think that's important. But whatever baggage and chips on the shoulders any of us may have, council and school side, really just, whether this camera's here or not, is not necessary, in my mind. And I'm not pointing just at any one member, because we sure see it on the council side as well. That the grandstanding and the games and, and the derogatory sort of thing and the pointing of fingers, for me, is, is not productive, it's a non-starter. Before I go to you, I, I did have Ms. Quinney and then Counselor Carrasco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one of the parts of being deliberate is, we have teachers who have been in this district and have gone through multiple superintendents and staff that have been here a really long time. And I think something that I wanted to talk about on Tuesday night and will talk about next Tuesday, is I think that we need, before we make decisions on how we're going to move forward, get some of that input back. I think people have been traumatized, people have stuck with this district and have been committed to seeing it be successful and committed to the education of our students, that, that is input that we need to gather and be mindful of, that people are being deeply affected by this constant turnover and see how they envision this district moving forward and the steps that they'd like to see in place to get there. As we represent the community, we have a lot of excellent and very dedicated teachers and staff in this district that on a daily basis are impacted by the decisions that we make, and having their input and their voices heard in this process, I think, is essential at this stage of the game. Thank you.
I have Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, I just want to, I'm not sure where Mr. Abrahamson was going with the whole Bible verse thing. It is what it is. I'm not here to look at anybody's spec or two-by-four, however you want to look at it. What it comes down to, a house divided, can't stand. And we're divided on both sides. We are, we rather defend than face the problems at hand. We have a problem with our town manager's search, we have a problem with our superintendent's search. Stop defending actions of the past and let's work on something in the future, moving on. We've made errors on both sides, but what it comes down to, what it comes down to is, are we going to accept and stop defending each other? We're here because there's got to be some transparency, there's got to be some answers. And, and regardless of how we as groups want to operate, the people that are being affected is our citizens. The people that we affect most is our citizens, adults. The people that you affect the most are our children. Two different ball fields. Two different ball fields. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Abrahamson?
I had him first, based on what I saw, and then I have Mr. Olivo.
All set? Mr. Olivo?
I just want to voice opinion and state that united we stand, divided we fall. We both know that we have... both council and the committee know that we have work ahead of us. Pointing out, pointing fingers is not going to get that work done. We scan our own lanes, we do what we need to do, we work together, and anything is possible. That's all I have to say.
Counselor Vecchia?
I've been up here for a long time. Over 10 years ago, I was a chairman of education on the council, and I feel that we should have a positive attitude. I think everybody up here is a nice person. I know all of you. I met this acting superintendent, and I think we have a good one here. I hear that we have four great principals in our school system. The first thing before I keep speaking, are those four principals here tonight?
Yes, sir.
Can we meet them to know who they are and where they are, so we can get to know each other better?
Sure.
They're not all here, but if they'll stand, we can introduce them.
Can you have them come up here?
Sure.
If you want, they can step to the podium so the camera can see them, so the public can meet them as well.
Because we're going to be a family up here, we might as well know who our people are.
I'd like them to introduce themselves on the floor. This is the district leadership team, and while I have the floor, if you don't mind, I would like to say how very proud I am of the hard work that they do and how extremely proud I am of the hard work that the teachers have been doing and continue to do in the effort of student achievement. We are under an AIP, it's an accelerated improvement plan, and my mantra has been we don't have time. We don't have time to not make decisions. Our children need us to make those decisions. And as I said, I'm extremely proud of the hard work that these principals have continued to do in very challenging situations, and I do appreciate Ms. Quinney's comment that we do need to take into consideration the voice of the teachers, who I think sometimes don't, isn't heard as it should be.
Thank you. My name is Mary Beth Skripak, principal of Eastford Road School.
Bill Latoy, principal at Chelton Street School.
Melissa Earls, principal of the Middle High School, and our colleague Vinnie Regan, principal of West Street, couldn't join us tonight.
Thank you.
And if I may, if I could please have Colleen Culligan stand, she is our director of pupil personnel, special education, and Ari Osborne, please, as part of our leadership team as well. He is interim or acting finance director.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. My point is that we have... I hear these people are tremendous, all right? I have everything I hear about these people is very good. I know, Brent, you're new here, and I know politics gets involved with a lot of people, and I know you're a little irritated about it, and you have a right to be. But I think we have a good team up here, and I think we should all work together. This is for the kids. I went through a lot of crap with the politicians 12, 13 years ago when they tried to take the school system down, okay? And we didn't let them do it. So, we should all be working together. I know you people, you're all good people, so let's start working together and we can start talking together. All right? We have a positive attitude, we can move forward. I think we've got the proper... I know we've got the proper people in place. I've heard a lot of good things about the schools. So, forget the negative attitudes, we don't need this anymore. Let's just say everything's for the kids, okay? Thank you.
I like this kind of gentler, Counselor Vecia. Do we have any other questions or comments? To follow up on that, just to build off, just as a reminder, as Chairman McGough and pointed out, the prior school committee meeting that was scheduled for just a couple nights ago, snowed out, obviously, based on that record-setting blizzard. That's been rescheduled for February 3, 7 o'clock here. The council has been invited to attend and take part in, I'm not sure if it'll still be the same agenda item, but on the agenda item that involves the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education coming in, so that, assuming that the school committee goes with the recommendation of the chair, you'll be able to ask questions and make comments and so forth. I thought I had one more... Oh, I just had one quick question. This is always the burning question, because I've been asked twice tonight. Do you know as to your plans in terms of tomorrow with potential of snow and school?
Just to inform the public, how that decision is made is Mike Cuomo, our director, our supervisor of grounds maintenance, will be in contact with the Department of Public Works, DPW, and also AA Transportation. And so, at about 4:30, after I haven't slept all night, because I'm afraid that I'm going to miss the call, I get the phone call as to whether or not we feel that the roads are clear and safe for students to arrive. At this point, yes, school is on, because DPW did a wonderful job, really, getting out there and clearing the roads and then getting to the sidewalks, which was the issue today. It was a safety issue, not a snow issue so much. So, tomorrow, we're on, unless we're blessed with another snowstorm overnight, which I'm keeping my fingers crossed we're not.
All right. They've already missed three days, we don't need to get greedy. My kids have only had to miss one day of school this week, I didn't get more time off, so... All right, with that, we will adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay, on favor? All right, we adjourn. Thank you.